Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Before we begin this evening, could we have a moment of silence for the victims
of last night's shooting?
Mayor, I also would like to acknowledge that today is International Firefighters' Day if we could have a moment for that, too.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Krauk Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Yep.
Alderman Keon.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Rollins Jump.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
The first hearing on the items on the agenda tonight are two public hearings. The first public hearing is the proposed amendment of the City of Manassas 2030 Comprehensive Plan to Rezone a Parcel on Racine Road. Director Kyle, could you?
Sure. So, what's precipitated this proposed amendment has been a request by Myron Construction to extend some property they own on Valley Road. They recently acquired what was the Buckland Tree Service property. The southern portion of that property is presently zoned I-1 Industrial. The property, their adjacent property to the east is in that same classification. The parcel to the north that they're seeking to have rezoned is presently zoned C-1 General Commercial. And the operation that they're contemplating for that area would not comply with that C-1 zoning district, and hence they are desirous of having that piece rezoned to I-1 Industria as well. Due to the fact that our comprehensive plan is currently calling for that area to be zoned commercial, we may not amend the zoning until such time as the comprehensive plan is amended to make the proposed land use consistent with that comprehensive plan. And so, we're now undertaking that process to amend the comprehensive plan. This public hearing is part of that process.
With that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to make any comments on the proposed amendment to the City of Manassas 2030 Comprehensive Plan? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close. And the second item is the proposed rezoning of the properties in proximity to 165 Main Street, and it includes several parcels from the C-2 Central Business District to the Planned Unit PUD and amending the Planned Unit Development District PUD plan for parcel number 300798 and 300790 adjacent to Marina Place. Director Kyle, would you like to tell us a little about this one as well?
Yes. This rezoning is being requested to facilitate the development of the Office Tower project at near the intersection of Main and Mill Streets. There are the parcels that were formerly occupied by the Bank Building and the Manassas Hotel, as well as a few smaller city-owned parcels that are encompassed by this rezoning request. The rezoning also takes with it the site plan parameters that were made part of this drawing. The Plan Commission had recommended approval of the rezoning with several contingencies, working out some details. So, by virtue of adopting this amendment to the zoning districts, making, amending it from C-2 Central Business District to Planned Unit Development, that would enable the construction of the office building to be consistent with our zoning requirements.
So, at this point, if anyone from the public wishes to speak on the proposed rezoning, you'd have an opportunity now. Seeing no one, we'll move on to Item E, and we'll call the public hearing to a close. And Item E is the public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If anyone wishes to speak on any matter of concern to the city, you're able to do so now. You'd have a five-minute limit, and if you could state your name and address for the record when you start, please. It looks like Roger's all ready to go.
Yeah. My name's Roger Connets, 516 Riverway, Manassas. And I guess I was just here to express a little concern about the tower plans as they currently are today for the City of Manassas, specifically the ground floor. Originally, it was supposed to be a multi-use area, as I understood that, which is, in my mind, meant little shops and stores, just like it was across the street. So, it would expand the business district. People would walk across. They parked a car once, visit all their places, buy a lot of stuff, and then go on. Now, I'm surprised to hear that we're talking about, in lieu of that, we're talking about a bank and some more offices. Not that I'm against that, but I don't see where that might not work, that concept of contiguous shopping from one person. When you go to get out of a car, you want to walk to the places you can go. If it's not there, they're going to get in their car and go away and not come back. So, I'd like to keep that in mind. I'd like to ask you to keep that in mind as we do planning for that tower. This is a really opportunity, a real opportunity to expand the business district, and you don't, you don't often get a, as you well know, you don't get a place in the middle of town where you can expand the business district very often. So, hopefully, we can make that work for everyone, all the businesses as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Connets. Is there anyone else?
Connie Connets, 516 Riverway. And also, we understand that it's good to have the office space because that'll bring people to downtown so that people can go out to restaurants and other shops that may develop. But I also had that concern about mixed use. It would have been nice if that bottom part somehow could be something that will attract the citizens of Manassas. So, basically, just encouraging you to take the time to negotiate a plan that best suits the needs of Manassas. We find that careful planning and thorough planning can help us to avoid surprises and regrets, which we sometimes have seen in the history of Manassas. So, if we take the careful planning, let's avoid those surprises. And again, this is a really good opportunity to help lead the way for downtown Manassas to be a vital part of our communities. So, please take the time in making careful decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Connets. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Mary Nabel, 713 First Street. Could we have a moment of silence? It's Don Murkis' birthday, our mayor's birthday today.
My fourth or fifth, 35th, 39th birthday, probably. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome. I'm under the understanding that financial negotiations are taking place in closed session in regards to this Manassas Tower development project. We are to know nothing at this time, or at least very little. Because, because why? This is a whole project that everybody was for, and now nobody seems to know a whole heck of a lot about it. There's something wrong with this picture. If taxpayers might be on the hook for another $6.55 million, which would amount to $10 million with interest, another $10 million, you want to create TIF number 13? It's an unlucky number, I think, in my book, for 28 more years? I don't know if I have this all right. This is just bits and pieces that I've been receiving from some people because nothing seems to be discussed out in the open about this. So, you want to create another TIF for number 13 for 28 more years, if I understand it correctly, for a parking ramp that can't be used by the residents, for customers only after 5 o'clock on holidays and on weekends? The responsibility of upkeep and maintenance is going to go to whom? Also, turning over the Marina Place parking ramp seems to be in the negotiations. I don't want to, I don't wish to hear that we may be headed for another steam plant debacle. I hope others will ask the necessary questions, secure the absolute facts and figures, outline the real benefits to the taxpayers of Manassas, and not proceed any further until the public has a chance to weigh in. Gilbert's left, Bontas left, a theater, a grocery store, restaurants have left. Who's to say that Faith Technology will remain here for a long period of time? I know there's no guarantees in this project, but it's really nice to have wishful thinking. But this project is just too large to be left for a vote in the hands of eight council members. So, I hope you can present all the questions to get feedback from the residents, the taxpayers. We've got a lot of projects still going. We've got 12 TIFs going already. I don't know where the money's going to come from, from these taxpayers, because the economy's not getting any better anytime soon. So, I'm thinking short term and long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nabel. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
I own the Blind Pig, 200 Main Street. It seems like that parking ramp's going to be directly behind my building. The biggest worry that I have is they're going to put a stone wall separating me from the customers, and my customers aren't going to be allowed to park in it during day hours or only on weekends and special events and things like that. I think maybe we could find a better plan. There was a mention of doing something between First Street and Broad Street, which would open up parking for library and other places that could be used as well. And I think that would probably be a less expensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Prokash. Tom, were you on your way up, too? Thanks.
Tom Connets, E. H. 58, Emery Street in Manassas. I'm here on the Vice President and General Manager of the Manassas Max, baseball primarily, athletic, but baseball primarily. And I have good news. And if you do not know, the city, along with Manassas High School and donors, and the park department, and your money, are trying to refurbish Coswell Park. Beautiful park, kind of fell behind here recently. So, by the end of next, at the end of this baseball season, you're going to see new things out there, much improvements, and it'll carry over onto next year also. So, recently, the Manassas Max, and we are more than, more or less in the middle between. So, through the generosity of MIM, Charter Road, real, right over here, 342 Shoot Street. You need a sandwich, go pay them at business. Small business people, very semi-minded. This is the second time they came forward, and they are, we have sponsorship on the scoreboard, which we will, besides that on the scoreboard, we'll announce it, we'll put it in our scoreboard, announce some of the volleyball games, who the sponsors are. This is the second time for them. So, we were aiming to, and they stepped forward for a check of $1,600, a three-year term for that. Mr. Tungay already has that check. And more recently, the Tyler Works Snake Farm Insurance, 1295 Appleton Road here in Manassas. More than once he's been out there supporting us. And this is also his second time sponsorship on that scoreboard toward Coswell Park improvements. You need insurance? Easy to deal with, a well-known name, semi-minded small businessman, support him. He's a good man to have in the City of Manassas back pocket. So, I'd like to say thank you to these two sponsors. If you got time to drop my line or thank you or something, and anybody out there in TV land, that there's one more space on that scoreboard yet, or if you want to drop some money in that treadmill fund for Coswell Park improvements, you'll do so, you'll do so. And Brian, here's that check, $600. So, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Connetsky. And I'll be out there to throw out the first pitch, one of these games this summer. So, hopefully, I won't get rained out this year. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing no one else, we'll move forward then. We have a couple items on the Report of Department Head Staff Consultants. We have Chief Oxer here this evening, and he would like to introduce new firefighter Zach Yankee.
Good evening, everyone. I know that it's not happened very often, but the stars are aligned just right tonight to get the two items on the agenda. It's swearing in of Zach and just giving some, a brief summary of Steve Delau's retirement, out with the old and in with the new. So...
One thing.
So, here we go. First, I want to thank Mayor Murkis and the City of Manassas Council for the opportunity to introduce, introduce to you the newest member of NINA Manassas Fire Rescue. It is my privilege to present you Zach, Zachary Zach Yankee. Zach is joined here tonight by his father, Mike. As some of you may or may not know, Zach's dad, Mike, has been serving the communities of NINA Manassas as a firefighter for NINA Manassas, for the NINA Fire Department and now NINA Manassas Fire Rescue for over 25 years, and is currently one of our fire officers. Zach will be filling a vacant, a vacancy left by retired fire officer Dave Grayble. Our hiring process included a written and physical, a written and physical agility test conducted by Fox Valley Technical College, interviews with the Internal Committee and the Fire Commission. Although he was nervous at times, it was very apparent that, that we would be getting an extremely knowledgeable and skilled firefighter that will enhance the service that we provide to the communities of Manassas and NINA. Zach attended Fox Valley Technical College and earned an associate's degree in a fire protection program. His work experience includes three years with the Black Creek Fire Department as a firefighter EMT and fire inspector. NINA Manassas Fire was also fortunate enough to have Zach serve as an internship with us. It's through that experience that the crews were able to assess his ability and eventually determine that we can be very comfortable in knowing that his abilities are going to meet the needs of NINA Manassas Fire Rescue. His official start date was Monday, March 30. He completed four weeks of recruit school under the direct supervision of Assistant Chief Sippan with the help of Assistant Chief Green. During this time, it was confirmed once again that we will be, he will be an asset to our department. Zach has been assigned to the Blue Shift and began working a 24-hour shift days on April 28. At this time, at this time, I'd asked City Clerk Debbie Galiazi to come forward and conduct a swearing ceremony for our newest firefighter at NINA Manassas Fire Rescue.
Do you raise your right hand, please? I, Zachary Yankee.
I, Zachary Yankee.
Do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To do my duty as a firefighter.
To do my duty as a firefighter.
For the cities of NINA and Manassas.
For the cities of NINA and Manassas.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the cities of NINA and Manassas.
To serve the cities, citizens of the cities of NINA and Manassas.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws.
And to uphold the laws.
And the constitutions.
And the constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The State of Wisconsin.
The State of Wisconsin.
And the cities of NINA and Manassas.
And the cities of NINA and Manassas.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause)
At this time, I'd like Zach's father, Mike, to join us up here and honor us with pinning Zach with his department badge. Everyone, please, please join me in welcoming Zach as he joins the dedicated men and women of NINA Manassas Fire Rescue. Thank you.
(applause) Do you want to say anything?
I would just like to thank the City of Manassas for the opportunity, and I hope that I can continue to serve as long as I can and to the best of my abilities. So, thank you.
Now, hm. Well, where do you start to honor an individual that has dedicated over 41 years of his life to a job where he served the communities of Manassas and NINA so diligently? On May 12 of 2015, Deputy Chief Steve Delau will be retiring from NINA Manassas Fire Rescue. We will be saying goodbye to a man that has dedicated most of his life to both the Manassas Fire Department and NINA Manassas Fire Rescue, and would like to take, and I'd like to take time to both thank and honor him for his 41 years of service. Steve began his career as a firefighter with the Manassas Fire Department on January 16, 1974. Well, quite a long time ago. Almost half the department wasn't even born by that time. As he is, as he has often said, this was one of the best days of his life. He progressed through the ranks from firefighter to driver operator to lieutenant to captain, and eventually deputy fire chief. His commitment to doing his best was always evident in everything he did. As he moved through the ranks, he was always willing to share his knowledge and express his pride, the pride that he had for the job with his new firefighters. That was one of the things that really, that, that he really felt good about and was very proud of. On January 1, 2003, NINA Manassas, the Manassas Fire Department and NINA Manassas, or the , excuse me, Manassas Fire Department and NINA Fire Department consolidated to become NINA Manassas Fire Rescue. And at that time, Steve was appointed the Deputy Fire Chief of Operations. The knowledge and skills he gained as Deputy Chief for the Manassas Fire Department were instrumental in helping form and currently run our department. His dedication, hard work, and commitment to do the best job he can has always helped our department become the most successful, one of the most successful organizations that I can think of. One of Steve's many responsibilities as Deputy Chief was to oversee the budget, not always easy. It was not uncommon to have circumstances exist where spending caused a great deal of concern. However, there was not a day that went by where his goal was to provide the safest working conditions for the firefighters that he was responsible for. Steve continually found ways to spend wisely, yet provide the tools and training to meet NINA Manassas Fire Rescue's needs. In recent conversations with Steve, he has said it is time to retire, but I know that deep down inside, he will miss the closeness the brotherhood of firefighting brings. For the last 41 years, he has experienced this. I am sure the friendships he has made will continue to be a large part of his retirement life. Steve looks forward to playing more golf, and from one golfer to another, I hope it's, I hope every round is nothing but fairways and greens. However, however, the largest adjustment will need to be made by Steve's, with Steve's retirement, by his wife Peggy. He'll be home a lot. However, she said she is actually looking forward to it. They both enjoy traveling together, and I'm sure they will be doing more of that. I'm sure he will continue his close association with many of the current and retired firefighters. Please join me in extending a heartfelt thank you to Deputy Chief Steve Delau for 41 years of dedicated service to the communities of NINA Manassas. This is something that is truly remarkable and very few of us will be able to accomplish.
(applause) Wow. Thank you very much. I didn't expect that, but thank you very much. I've only had 41 years to think about this and what to say on this day, and you start to wonder, who do I start to thank? And I could look back to 1973 when my dad came home from a Police and Fire Commission meeting and said, "Do you want to be a firefighter?" That was history. Do I thank the six fire chiefs that I've worked under? Do I thank the several mayors that I've worked under? And do I even start to thank the numerous council members that I've worked under in my 41 years? It's been a privilege and an honor to be in the fire service. It's been a fantastic ride. It's been a lot of fun, good times, made a lot of friends. It's been really great, believe me, when I say that. But what I'd like to do in closing, and not so much about me, is I want to leave a message for the citizens and the council members, and that is, get to know your fire department and get to know your firefighters. They're a great group of people. The fire department is more than an $8 million budget. It's more than a union going with the city on negotiations and stuff. It's more than that. You need to get out there, when they're out training, stop and say hello. If they're at a fire scene, see if there's some way you can help. They're just, it's a great group of guys. When you're sitting at home on Christmas, opening up presents with your family and friends, or you're at a Thanksgiving dinner, remember, we've got four fire stations manned between the two cities. These guys aren't home with their families. They're serving the citizens of Manassas and also the citizens of NINA and everybody that travels through our communities. So, in closing, again, thank you very much. It's been a great ride. I've enjoyed every minute of it. Thank you.
One last thing. I would like to remind and invite everyone to attend the retirement celebration for Deputy Chief Delau that is planned for Tuesday, May 12, from 9:00 to 10:00 in the morning at Station 32, 125 East Colombian Avenue in NINA. And thank you very much for your time.
Next item on the agenda is the minutes to receive in the communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive the minutes A through H and communications I through L.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of these items? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the content agenda. There are five items this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council signed I on April 21, and the new Common Council on April 21. The Administration Committee recommendations of April 21 to authorize an amendment to the planned documents and agreements with Precision Retirement Group to include represented employees and confirm the requirement that all eligible city employees are subject to the distribution of accumulated sick leave benefits through the post-employment benefit plan administered by Precision Retirement Group. And the Board of Public Works recommendations from April 21 to accept the donation from Myron Construction of a concrete planter at the Manassas Library. And the NINA Manassas Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations of April 28 to authorize hiring and replacement for the Deputy Chief of Operations position subject to the departure, retirement of the existing employee with NINA Manassas Fire Rescue. Are there any items that anyone wishes to have separated this evening? Alderman Taylor?
I don't.
Does anyone have any items that they would like separated this evening? Seeing none, do we have a motion for all of the items? Seeing none, do we have a motion for all of the items? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion for consent agenda items one through five.
There's a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item I is ordinances and resolutions. There is one this evening, ordinance aid. An ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the district in proximity to Main and Mill Streets. Is there a motion to approve this evening? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve ordinance O-8-15.
Is there a second? Just a couple seconds, it looks like. So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I wonder if you could take us through that list and explain to us the changes in that district.
I'm not sure exactly which parcels which of these descriptions are. But what this ordinance does in general is it rezones the parcel shown on the map from C2 to PUD. If I'm speaking out of order, let me know, Greg.
If I may, it's the former Manassia Hotel, that parcel. The former bank building parcel. And then there's three small city-owned parcels behind that comprise the walkway. And then the PUD plan is being amended for the Broad Street, I'm sorry, the Marina Place parking structure and the surface parking. The surface or the, the street level, the upper section of the parking structure is not impacted by the proposed development. However, the lower surface parking on Marina Place is impacted. The expectation is, is that that will become a privately owned parking lot with a reservation of six parking stalls for public use together with some access provided to service the remaining two privately owned buildings in the rear.
Does that answer your question, Alderman Taylor?
Director Kyle, you had mentioned the parking garage or the parking ramp. Where on this document is that?
The, the parking ramp, it's, it's, the structure is not on a separate parcel at the moment from the surface level parking on Marina Place. So it's this L-shaped piece that is currently comprised the parcel of the, all of the Marina Place parking. And so as this moves forward, what will happen is a certified survey map will be created to kind of reconfigure these parcels in such a way that the, the bank, the hotel, the walkway behind what was the bank and the hotel, and then the surface parking on Marina Place will be all one parcel that will be associated with the tower development.
And do we have enough acreage there for the planned unit development?
There's a requirement for a one-acre planned unit development. We already have the Marina Place planned unit development that is larger than an acre. This PUD overrides portions of that PUD, and this entire site is over an acre that's being contemplated for the tower development.
Thank you.
Attorney Captain has a comment?
I would just recommend that this action, or that this item not be voted on this evening since it does anticipate a development agreement which has not been approved yet. So it would just be my recommendation that it be held to the May 18th meeting, to the next meeting. And there's no guarantees that development agreement is something that the common council is going to be considering. And so at that point, when they decide to move forward with it, then that would be the time really to consider this, adopting this ordinance.
Is there other discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Greg, on this PUD, you mentioned an acre of land. Is it proper to encroach into another one to get the acre of land? When you're creating one, don't you have to have that unit as an acre of land?
I don't know that that's a specific requirement. It's, it's the PUD zoning district needs to be an acre, and we will have a PUD zoning district that's greater than one acre. It doesn't say each, each parcel needs to be an acre.
I often heard when you're creating one, you should have an acre of land just for that piece, not encroach into another one to get to your acre.
It's not, it's not a requirement of the ordinance. It's just the district size has to be an acre.
Okay.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Greg, on this ordinance, which parcel number is the Marina Place parking lot?
Well, I'm straining my eyesight, but it's the 798. Zero zero.
798 00?
Yep.
Okay.
And the 790 is the Marina Place right of way.
And ninety? Okay, right of way. And I do have another question. May I ask, Mayor, why, why, why are they asking for this parking lot?
To, well, the, as, as I think you're aware, they're looking for the bulk of the parking to be accommodated in the parking ramp over here in Broad Street. There is a need for additional parking in closer proximity to the building to serve the customers of the bank, to serve the customers of the dental office, and to accommodate visitor parking for the Faith Technologies piece.
So the parking lot then is going to be customers of the dentist? And the, no, just for Faith Technologies people only?
No. The dental office is just a business office. There won't be any teeth drilling going on.
Okay.
So, and then, community first. That, they're, they're the primary tenant on the first floor, and they would have people coming in to do transactions. And then, I think it's not unreasonable to expect that with 300 employees, many of them technical staff, that there would be interaction amongst other Faith employees, as well as their vendors and customers that would be looking for a place to park in fairly close proximity to the building.
And right now, that area, where would the, because we have the condos right on the river there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so those people, of course, as yourself, have people to come and visit and that, where are they going to park?
Okay, well, there are garages, you know, serving those establishments, and then there's some space between the garage and the street. There's being made the provision for those six stalls that I mentioned that will be made available for public parking, and those will be located up along the east side of the parking structure. In addition to that, it's proposed that the parking in that rear area would be made available to anyone to park there outside of normal business hours.
Okay. I'm just going to throw this out there. From what I see and observe, when I always drive by, the Faith Technology parking lot, right now, it's never filled. You know, never full, never 100% full. And, and I know this is just a picture, but I, I just want to say that, you know, that's about right how full it is, that parking lot. It's never, never full, never, ever. And, and I just, you know, for, you know, Grins, I just counted the open spaces, which could be very well, close to it, and there's 27 open spaces in that Faith Technologies parking spot now. And here, I'm just looking, you know, if you take that, what, what the developers want is, you know, this is 27 parking stalls here. My concern is just, you know, that they're not filling up the parking lot right now over at Faith Technologies. I see that every day. It's never full. So I just want to express my concern about that. Thank you.
And if I may point out, and I think the owner slash developer of the office tower can probably speak more knowledgeably about this, but Faith Technology is planning a very substantial expansion in their workforce, not just here, but I think elsewhere across the country. And even though that lot may not be full every day, I think it is very much their expectation that that lot will be fully utilized in the future. Because why do we need more? Well, we're going to be adding, you know, in addition to the utilization of the building at Discovery Point, we're going to be, they're going to be bringing in approximately 300 employees into the office tower. So they are in need of places to park, as well as what I had mentioned for, you know, the vendors and others that do business with Faith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to remove my, by the recommendation, attorney, I'd like to remove my motion to approve.
Either that, or you could hold it if you want.
Well, I was going to table, I was going to ask to table it, until such time, we have a planned unit, our, our planned unit development, our development agreement is in place, and then we would go forward at that point.
And you can table it with the motion already on the floor if you'd like.
Okay, then my motion would be to table it.
So motion to table, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. And any discussion on that? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item J is appointments. The first appointment is the appointment of David Rashid to the Board of Appeals. Is there a motion? Not everyone at once. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion for the appointment of David Rashid to the Board of Appeals for the term of 5, 4, 15 to 2, 1, 18.
Is there a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The second is the appointment of Shelley Clodill to the Landmarks Commission. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to put for the appointment of Shelley Clodill, 1075 Brighton Drive, to the Landmarks Commission for the term of 5, 4, 15 through 3, 1, 18.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is the appointment of Alderman Rollins-Jump to the Ad-Hoc Sustainability Board. And the reason she wasn't on the last agenda was because I needed to check with her that she was available at the time that we held the meetings. So that's why it's waiting. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for the appointment of Melissa Rollins-Jump, 1016 Stardust Drive, Manassia, to the Ad-Hoc Sustainability Board.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Taylor? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is the approval of Alderman Benner to the Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the approval of Alderman Benner to the Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee for the term of one year, effective immediately.
Here's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item K is held over business. Item one is the approval of Alderman Langdon to the Landmarks Commission. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for the approval of Alderman Langdon to the Landmarks Commission for the term of one year, effective immediately.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is the appointment of the city attorney, Pamela Captain. Is there a motion this evening? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make the motion for the appointment of the city attorney, Pamela Captain.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion this evening? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to discuss the separation from the personnel director and the city attorney position. And having, I had some input from the community on this, and they feel that there should be an adjustment in this position, seeing that the duties of city attorney slash personnel director have changed. The percentages were 57, 35, and 8 with the, for the job of a city attorney personnel, personnel director. And I would like to see the Personnel Committee look into this and to have a recommendation. I'm surprised there isn't a recommendation that came forward with this, such a strong change in this position.
So, so this evening, we are appointing a city attorney. If we were changing the job description, I did include some of that in there, that would be something that would happen at the Personnel Committee. And you could request that be on the Personnel Committee agenda?
I did request the chairman of the Personnel Committee to have this, but he refused to put it on. And I don't think you can legally do that. If a member of this council wants something to show up in one of the major departments for this council, it has the right to show up there. And I don't think the chairman has that power to do that.
If the chairman doesn't wish to put it on there, I will put it on the council agenda in a future date. But I, at this point, we need to actually appoint a city attorney, and then we can change.
And we have the ability then, at that point, to change anything we want in the Personnel Committee, is that correct, on this job? If we're approving this job, are we approving the wages? Are we approving?
We aren't changing any of that. That's already all in the ordinance, the job description, the duties, all those items. If you want to change the wages or the job description or any of those items, that would be separate from what we're doing tonight. We're appointing a person to a position that's already created.
In all these documents, it states that Human Resource Director Pamela Captain, city attorney, personnel director, all these documents state that this is the responsibility of that position and what it was hired for. Former Alderman, it told me that we're here when this position was hired, that that was the duties of it. Now, we're drastically changing the duties of that by eliminating personnel director. The city voted last meeting to approve a new HR position. So, so are you saying that they should go pack the personnel, and then we can discuss?
What, what we're working on tonight is appointing the person that would be the city attorney for the city. Not the job description for that person, that's already existing. The cell restructure is already existing. All those things. All those things are already existing. This person, we're just appointing a person as a City Attorney at this point.
I have not seen any correspondence from this body that we restructured this position, and any formal that we eliminated the Personnel portion of this from this body.
Regardless, it would still be appointing the person that is the City Attorney.
Okay. And that's fine, so you're saying, I just want to get clear with this, because there is a lot of people from the public that asked for this, and it's a big change for the community. And I'm just asking you, so this goes, this should go back to Personnel to talk about the specifics of this position?
We can, the Personnel Committee can change the job duties of a person. It is an ordinance form right now. They'd have to recommend to the council to change the ordinance.
And we're not putting the cart before the horse here, that we're changing, we're approving the position, and then we're going back and changing?
We are not approving the position. We're approving the person that is sitting in the position that's already created.
Okay.
Kind of like we did with the deputy fire chief earlier in the meeting.
And along with that comes wages and benefits and everything?
Those are already all approved. Those continue, as they were.
With this position?
Yes. Those can be changed, though, if.
Okay. And you're saying there was no change to this position at all? You're saying that these documents that were produced by the city are not?
This appointment is only the portion of this person's job that relates to the attorney. So, if we change the HR portion of it, that has no portion, nothing to do with the appointment with the attorney.
Okay, so the pay and everything will stay the same, is that correct?
That is what, unless someone, unless the council approves change, yes.
Okay.
But everything else would stay the same at this point, yes.
So, hiring a new person and taking away these responsibilities, you don't think that there should be any adjustment made?
I didn't say that. I said that we are appointing.
Oh, no, I know you didn't say that. I'm asking you that.
That's not what's on the agenda this evening. The agenda item is the appointment of the City Attorney. The position is described with an ordinance. These are the duties of the City Attorney. If we want to change those duties, we can do that, yes.
I've already asked, but I'll ask again, that this appear on the Personnel Committee for further discussion on the job duties of this position. As you said, tonight, if it's just approving the person for the position, and then we'll look at the specifics of that in the Personnel Committee. Is that correct?
That would be where you would do that, yes.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Alderman Slusky?
Thank you. So, let me get this straight, you're gonna put something on the Personnel Committee that explains these dual roles, and when these dual roles go away, they're gonna come back to the Personnel Committee? Because we're approving dual roles all along the line lately, and I just wanted to know what happens, what changes with these dual roles when the person goes back to their existing job and aren't doing that?
I guess I'm not following it, but.
Well, we got employees that we're adding dual roles to, and we're giving them pay increases. What happens when these dual roles go away?
The city council and the Personnel Committee could change those job descriptions.
So, is there an ordinance or a resolution that addresses that?
That addresses what?
What happens with these dual roles? Do we keep the pay at the same, pay and benefit at the same, even though they're not doing that job?
Can you give me an example?
Well, like in the Department of Public Works, we're putting some lead guys on. What happens if he's not a lead guy anymore?
Then they would revert back to whatever, whatever position we put them in. If they were a truck driver, or a sewer operator, or one of those items?
Okay, so if you have a city attorney, and she's Personnel also, 50/50, what happens if she's only doing 50%, 50% attorney stuff, and the Personnel job goes away? I'd like to know what the description, the job description has to change then.
Are you saying that she would only work 50, 57% of?
Well, I don't know, we're not really getting that.
Normal hours?
I have no idea if she's working only 50% of her hours. I don't have the time to spend down here to find out who's doing what.
She would be working a minimum of 50 hours, probably closer to 60 hours a week, would be my guess.
Okay, that's fine, but I don't know that.
Sure.
And most of the, most of the Aldermen don't know that.
There is plenty.
We have to take your word for it.
Just watch for her car in the parking lot.
Okay.
But there is plenty of things that she is still responsible for.
And this isn't about her, this is about the position.
Yes, exactly.
When you get these dual roles, and one of the roles goes away, what if she decides she wants, or this person decide one, they do Personnel full-time?
But they don't, the council actually created the Administrative Services Department, Director, sorry.
Yes.
I was corrected, the Director. So, we knew that that was going on, and we do need to change the job description.
Yes.
I don't know if that will change salary, if it will change other things.
I don't know either.
We did, we did do a comparison of wages for other attorneys that are very similar, and the wage is actually.
That's not the discussion, what, if she's being compensated fairly or not. I just want to know, when you have these dual roles, is there some ordinance or resolution that addresses that, brings that the Personnel, this job description has changed, and how do we address that going forward?
There is nothing like that, no, that I know of.
Can we bring that back to Personnel and?
I don't think you'd have a resolution to do that. Can I?
There is a charter ordinance that deals with the City Attorney position, and it describes what the duties are. That has not changed, that would not change. There is, when the Administrative Services Director position was created, some of the HR duties were moved to that position. The position that you just created was, I'm trying to think of what was the title of it again?
HR Coordinator?
Human Resources Specialist. Human Resources, no, it was.
No, that was, that was the old job.
That was the old job. It was the Human Resources Specialist position. There was a person in that position, there, that position's been around for a number of years. And rather than that title, it's a different title, the Coordinator position, with some additional duties that were added to that position. So, that's not the Personnel Director position. Some of those duties were moved to the Administrative Services Director a couple of years ago when she was hired.
Yeah. I just want to know if there's some kind of, something that should be put in the, some kind of resolution or something to deal with this?
Sure.
That should be brought to Personnel and let us know that this person's not doing one job or the other. How are we gonna address that going forward?
That's what I was.
Because I'm getting a lot of questions from the, from citizens, too.
We actually decreased the numbers of job, number of jobs within Finance, HR, and the Attorney by one over the past, probably five years now. So, we actually are not adding any positions, it's just the workload is distributed differently.
I don't know if you can bring that forward to Personnel and?
I don't think we'd have a resolution that would talk about that. Typically, if a person changes jobs, we would move them to that new job description. For the example, with a lead position, that would be different.
And all of this did go through? I mean, that's where it came from. It came from the Personnel Committee, which is the Common Council, and then it went through the Common Council. All of these changes did, that's.
Yes, I remember them coming through, but like Alderman Taylor's question is, how do you deal with that when, when that one person, that duty's taken, taken away from them? Or she doesn't want to do that, or he or she doesn't want to do that duty anymore, and?
Well, that's not the case here. It wasn't the employee that shows a new job description.
But that could happen in the future, not that it happened here.
We would not, we would not allow an employee to say, "I don't want to do this anymore."
Well, I'm sure that happens.
That, that's not acceptable. I don't want to sweep the floor anymore, and that's my job, so I'm not gonna do it. That, that doesn't work that way.
You didn't want to be dog catcher anymore, but you still get paid for being dog catcher, and?
So, if, if someone would like to make a proposal, what they would like to see changed, we'd be happy to talk to you about it.
What are you bringing back, Alderman, you're bringing back the Personnel for Alderman Taylor?
I'm not sure what Alderman Taylor wants. I'll ask him again after the meeting, exactly what he would like on there, and what his suggestion is to put on the agenda. I was trying to ask him that last week, and he couldn't describe to me exactly what he was looking for, other than to discuss it. We should have some sort of a proposal if we're putting it on an agenda, not just a discussion, because we do have to get someplace.
You can get it on the agenda, no?
Well, yeah.
It's not to go through the Chair?
The Chair would set the agenda. I am the Chair of the Common Council. If the Chair of Personnel doesn't want to do it, we'll put it on the Common Council agenda.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be on one of the two, but he has to provide me a proposal of what he is proposing to change.
He's got a week to do that.
Okay, two weeks. You're welcome. Alderman Taylor?
I did provide that to you, Mayor, through our conversation we have, and the Chairman of Personnel cannot just say, "I'm not gonna take up the city's business." You cannot do that, okay? And what I'm addressing here tonight is, former Alderman told me, when the City Attorney was hired, it was City Attorney slash Personnel Director. Jeff Brant held that position for many years when I was on the council, and that was a continuation when the Attorney was hired, okay? The community was responding and saying, "Okay, if you're cutting out the Personnel Director of that position, should there be a wage adjustment in that, or any other type of adjustments made to that?" As I talked to you in our conversation, and I thought that you were putting that in the written form for this body. Now, seeing that, I want to explain, as I did in a memo to all the council members here, to all the staff, and communicated this to the community internally in a memo, and I would like to say this publicly. The reason I held this last week is, this showed up on the new councils, this new council that was elected and put into office last week, this showed up on their agenda. We had no opportunity at that point to talk about this or explain this. There was no other way to move forward of this than would hold it for two weeks, and that did not have the elimination of our City Attorney, as some might have thought. The Mayor was correct in his memo, that it's a continuation of the job, but we were holding this. The laws, the rules of this body sometime are, they're very restrictive, and it's sometimes it's difficult to have a conversation up here and, and move forward with something. But we have the rules and regulations of this council to abide by, and sometimes they're too restrictive. And the only option was to hold this for two weeks, which is something we do up here from time to time on an issue. That was the only option for this new council to look at this. And it will be up to this new council to look at if they feel that there should be some sort of a wage, wage adjustment on this position.
Alderman Taylor, we're working on the appointment of the City Attorney right now, not the wages of the City Attorney.
I, I was through with my conversation here, but I just wanted to inform the public what, what that was.
Alderman Langdon?
I, you know, listening to these guys, I mean, I, we talked, and I think, you know, I know what they're saying, you know, in the functions, but I think what Alderman Taylor wanted to do was just get something, you know, we, and you, we talked, you made, got some numbers, and so that the whole council could look at them, you know? But I know, we're just appointing the person, and then we can do that later. And that's what the Mayor's saying, that we can bring that up later and put on agenda and then discuss it at that time.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we at this time hired a Human Resources Specialist or Coordinator?
Well, that's also not your mean, but yes, we have posted the position.
So, the position is still open, in other words?
Yes.
So, seeing that the position is still open, perhaps we could agree to move forward with this appointment tonight and take any other matters up at a later time.
Alderman Taylor?
Just to clarify, I work for the public. I work for the people that elect me to this position. I'm here for no other reason than what the laws are set up with. I'm here to serve the people of the community. I'm their mouth, I'm their representation, and so is the other members of this body up here. And we're here for no other reason than to serve the public. And when the public asks us something, I feel they have a right through me to ask questions. Three former Aldermen asked me this question, that were here when the appointment took place, and some other citizens in the community asked me this, too.
Yes.
So, all I'm doing is responding to the public, and to the taxpayer, and to the citizens.
Seeing no other discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item M is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for April 21st through 30th. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 4, 21, 15 to 4, 30, 15, in the amount of $987,142.12.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications for 2013 through 2015. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2013 through 2015 licensing period, as listed under approved on the Police Department's memo dated April 28th, 2015.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item three is the beverage operators' license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license application, applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period, as listed under approved in the Police Department's memo dated 2000, or dated April 28th, 2015.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item four is a Class B liquor license application for the Manasha Athletic Association to sell fermented malt beverages at Coslo Park Concessions from May 5th through October 31st, 2015. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Class B liquor license application with the Manasha Athletic Association to sell fermented malt beverages, Coslo Park Concession, May 5th, 2013 through October 31st, 2015. Paul S. Johnson, agent.
There's a motion, a second. This is for May 5th, 2015 through October 31st, 2015. Someone thought you might have said 13 by mistake, so I just wanted to clarify that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item five is a development agreement by and between the City of Manasha, Wisconsin and Manasha Downtown Development LLC. Uh-oh. This isn't good, they all vanished. I looked down for two seconds. Are they coming back, or? We are on the development agreement?
Okay.
And you vanished on me.
Yeah, well, I didn't want to get in trouble, so I had a converse with Pam, and the question I asked her had to do with the fact that we did have discussions at the Administration Committee in closed session, and we've made some progress in terms of reviewing those parameters that were discussed with the developer. And it's my thought that I would kind of go through a few of those things to kind of describe where we're at, but I would seek your input as to whether it would be your preference to at least start a conversation in open session, and then perhaps adjourn, and in the interim address, at least in a general sense, some of the issues that the Administration Committee had put forth to request. request consideration by the developer.
Thank you. Which ones you want, where do you want to start? My biggest one was the 1.75 million. Can we discuss that in open session here? I'd like to, because that's what the taxpayers want to hear. The incentive?
Well, it would be up to the body as a whole.
Okay, I requested some information last, or earlier this week, or no, last week, Friday, about how can we be doing this when there's not a TIF created yet, and it's supposed to be brick and mortar that they were supposed to invest, and this wasn't really an investment in the site yet. It was just for acquisition of the building and demolition of it. How can you take, how can you give the 1.75 as an incentive by changing the words?
Well, that's exactly it. I mean, we're talking about providing the developer an incentive. And whether that's for this or for that is somewhat immaterial. Development assistance is an eligible expense under the TIF.
Well, there's not, there's not a TIF created at this point, and we're talking about 1.75 million for acquisition and demolition of the building. And if there's not a TIF created, how can you change the wording? Everybody knows what it's for.
It's for development assistance. We're incentivizing the developer to build here in downtown Manasha as opposed to a cornfield out in, you know, Harrison.
Yes, I agree. That we're incent, but that wasn't what we were led to believe. It's right out there. It says this is for purchase of the building and demolition and cleanup cost.
And when it is in the TIF project plan, it will be presented as developer assistance.
So we're just changing the words when it comes to the TIF plan, but right now, we all know what it is. So we can do that legally, and I'd like to see where the state of Wisconsin says you can do this with a TIF.
You can't, you can't put previous expenditures into the TIF, but for certain, like, soft costs and that sort of thing. But there's nothing preventing us from providing an incentive for building a $12 million office building. And that 1.75 million does not have to be tied to any specific parameter other than it's in the category of development assistance.
But I'm being told it's for acquisition and demolition of the building, but we're changing the words to justify that use.
When a number is requested from a developer, generally the question is, well, how did you consider coming up with this specific number? So that's all that is. The, is how the number was reached at.
So shouldn't this TIF have been created first before we even came for this request?
Well, the normal process is that we would be negotiating a development agreement, and oftentimes the development agreement contemplates the creation of a TIF. But it's, in this case, we're, you know, kind of, we're doing some things a little bit out of that sequence, as you are all aware.
I don't like the, I don't like the sequence.
But we're, we're presented with a project here, a substantial investment in our downtown. The developer is requiring of the community some assistance in order to make this development feasible within a cost schedule that would be supportable by the rents they would be obtaining from the tenants of the building. And what's being sought is compensation for what would be extraordinary costs.
This is, this is being put together in the wrong order. I would have never approved for this building to be torn down in the first place if I knew they would have been coming back for this 1.75 million. I would have told them to renovate the building. They wanted to remove the problem that they had there, so they purchased the building. They tore it down. Now they're coming to us for demolition and purchase price. The public isn't very appreciative of this maneuver. It's sort of like a bait and switch to me.
Well, you can call it what you wish, but we are now presented with an opportunity to have a major new investment in our downtown.
I agree. I'm not against the building one iota.
But we have to have a site to put it on, and we have to have the financing in place in order to make it work. And despite the fact that we may be dissatisfied about the course of events, we are at a juncture now where we have a hole in the ground over at Main and Mill Street, and we need to do something either to decide to move forward with a project and get a new development there that's going to transform our downtown, or what?
I, I wholeheartedly agree with the building. I don't like the financing part of it. And when did you know what, when they'd be coming for this 1.75 million, before it was torn down or after the fact?
Well, when it was presented to us as a proposal. They acquired the building with the idea, the buildings with the idea of eliminating, obliterating influence on the downtown. They, and I should probably defer to the developer, but they then sought out tenants that would enable them to build something on that site. And that something, I think, turned out to be a larger project than perhaps was even originally contemplated. I don't know that, you know, what they had in place. I don't think they really had a lot in place when they, when they decided to make this investment to facilitate a positive change for the downtown. They began working on finding tenants, and the project kind of built up from there.
Okay. So my request for that information, Peggy, on the 1.75 million by changing the wording and using as an incentive, is, is there anything from the state that created this TIF?
Well, I did talk to the Department of Revenue about it, and I have in front of me Chapter One, Section Five of the TIF glossary, and it explains all of the allowable project costs of the expenditures. And one of those is a cash grant if a development agreement is signed, and that's exactly what the city was looking at doing, or at least that's what the proposal was. So again, just to maybe reiterate what Attorney Captain said, because the basis is those costs, doesn't mean that's what we're paying them for. The proposal is to pay them basically a development assistance grant.
We're back to changing the word. That's what's really troubling to me. And it's troubling to most of the taxpayers that could possibly be on the dole for this if it doesn't perform properly. I'm hoping it will perform properly, because I think there's a chance that this could go through. And then there was one question on the $700,000 transfer. Can we talk to that from one TIF to another? That $700,000 transfer is supposed to be from one TIF to a distressed TIF. We don't even have a TIF created. We don't have a map yet, and we're making a $700,000 transfer from TIF V to proposed TIF 13. Is that legal?
I'll defer to Peggy on that.
TIF transfers, donor TIFs are not for distressed TIFs. Those are to any other TIF that's a blighted TIF that you can make work through that donation. So there are no requirements against that. Now, your question to me, I believe, was the timing, you know, one TIF to another. That happens simultaneously. So TIF 13 then would be created if this went through, and then the donation would happen. So you may be just talking about a logistical issue as opposed to the way it would happen. I've seen this in my past lives. In the last 20 years, I've seen this happen numerous times. A donation from an industrial-type TIF to a blighted TIF, at the time of creation, project plan amendments are done, and if one, if the donation from the TIF, the first TIF, is allowed or is approved by the council and JRB, then the next one would be the creation of 13 with that donation included in it. So that is not uncommon.
So are you predicting this is going to be a troubled TIF right off the get-go, that we need 700,000 to keep this thing going?
It's part of the financing plan.
Yes. And if this doesn't, if this part doesn't work, this TIF is dead in the water? The transfer?
We would have to come up with another financing source for the 750,000. That would be correct.
And we're still waiting for a grant from the, from the state? Sounds like a troubled TIF before it even gets, hits the road. And we're, if we're talking a $12 million project, and we're talking 1.2 million. I'm concerned for the taxpayers here.
We are being asked to stretch to find a way to make this project work. And I think you have to focus on what we're getting for what we're giving. And it's not just about the value of the building, or, you know, the value of the parking ramp. It's about what 300 employees that are downtown here every day are going to do for our businesses that are in place here, supporting those businesses, generating new business.
You have me there. You have me there. I just don't like this financing package that we're proposing to put together to get those 300 jobs. At what point do I put the taxpayers in jeopardy to get these 300 jobs?
It would be terrific if these projects would just land in our lap without any investment from the community. I would challenge you to show me where that has happened in a redevelopment scenario, anywhere in the Fox Valley, that the community hasn't had to contribute substantial resources to make that project happen here. It's a lot easier going out on the highway and building this project than the cornfield. A lot less expense. There's, we're not, we wouldn't be going through a half dozen different special meetings in order to make this work.
I wholeheartedly agree. There's, there's open property right across the river from this piece of property, and we wouldn't have to do that to it. For some reason, they want this site, and they want to put their building here.
Well, the reason they want it here.
God bless them for that, but I don't, I still have a hard time taking the taxpayers and putting them in jeopardy for this, and a TIF that could be distressed right off the get-go.
The reason that they're focusing on this site is because Faith Technologies wants to have a business campus. They have a presence in the Discovery Point Building. They're needing all of that space plus this new space.
Okay, and are there any guarantees? I hope they're there for 100 years, but I heard numerous times there are no guarantees. And I would need a lot more information to find out if there is any kind of guarantees. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Captain, Director Kyle indicated that there may have been some negotiations that took place between our administration committee meeting, closed session meeting, and now. Is there a way for us, in the interest of everyone who is here this evening, along with the people who will be watching this on television, to get an update on where we are at this point? How would I accomplish, is there a way for me to accomplish that through parliamentary procedure here?
If no one has any objections, Director Kyle could go through some of those issues. If there would be an objection, then that would be the time to go into closed session if you wanted to discuss something negotiating in closed session. But otherwise, there, it would just be if there's no objections, you could ask questions and move forward.
So I could request unanimous consent? Okay. So I'll request, are there any objections to allowing Director Kyle to explain to us where we are today?
Are there any objections? I'm not sure why your mic isn't on, Kevin.
All right, thank you. I would only be in favor of that at this point if the developer is, because I don't know that they want to disclose the conditions at this point. Certainly before we were approved something, I would be in favor of making public all the conditions of the development agreement, but at this point, we're still negotiating, and I'm not sure if the developer's in favor of that. And my opinion would be if they're in favor of it, I certainly am, but I don't want to put them in an uncomfortable position either at this point.
Mr. Hogarty is here this evening, and I believe we talked about doing some of that in open session?
Yes, we have no objection to that, and I am certainly here to discuss, answer any questions that I can.
Alderman Langdon, on the same topic?
No, we're doing yours, right?
Yeah, the unanimous consent we're still on right now?
Yep.
Okay. So if there's no objection, we will allow Mr. Hogarty and Mr. Kyle to kind of walk through the development agreement and where we're at at this point.
Okay, and.
You can have it shared, Mr. Hogarty. Thanks. We'll let you share the mic.
So as was discussed at the administration committee, staff had prepared a number of items that we were wanting the developer to address, and then the administration committee had likewise raised several issues to which we've had several responses, and there may be some new ideas going forward. There was a request to identify what constituted the figure that Alderman Zalinski was referring to. I think you were provided with that information indicating what those expenses were for the assembly costs. There was a request by the committee to reduce the amount of developer incentive. That proposal was not approved or received favorably by the developer. We had a number of issues sort of focusing around the guarantee of value, the $12 million figure, what that meant as we move forward through time, through various lease terms, through the termination of what was at that point in time thought to be the developer's obligation to own the parking structure and its transfer to the city. There were issues presented regarding the parking structure itself, maintenance requirements, what's going to happen at certain points in time when that was expected to transfer to the city, what condition it would be in, and so forth. There was also a request from the committee to consider the charges for parking. There was a request to evaluate surface parking options in proximity to the site. That did not receive favorable view for a number of reasons, both from a timeline and from just the physical location of that parking with respect to the office building. There was discussion about the operation of the CDI grant and the timing of that, and whether that ought to be a contingency of the development agreement, the formation of the TIF district itself, as well as the increment sharing from TIF number five. I think that was the primary things. What we'd be looking for tonight is not unlike what was sought by staff from the, you know, the direction from the administration committee, and that was, that would be to, you know, for staff to continue its effort to negotiate this development agreement and bring that back with other associated documents for consideration by the common council. We have another aspect of this that I think you're all aware of, and that's we've already committed 120 stalls in the Broad Street Lot to McCrone Downtown Development LLC. We've had some discussions with McCrone, as well as with property owners for Jimmy and Yeh Hall about some options for that. And likewise, we'd be looking to continue our negotiations to bring back an option for relocating those 120 stalls in the Broad Street Lot to another location to meet our obligations to McCrone Downtown Development. And, John, if you'd like to kind of indicate.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Council President, and members of the common council. This is the, I think, third or fourth public meeting that This is the, I think, third or fourth public meeting that we've had in various different groups of this body, Plan Commission, Landmarks. And I've tried at the outset of each meeting to give a very short, I know everybody's time is valuable, but just of why we're involved in this. And I think that's important. This group of investors, as I've made clear, they're not, we're not private developers. It's not our job every day. But this group of investors are people who care about Manassia. And they've come together with one, one objective in mind, and that is to help downtown Manassia, help Manassia as a whole. Bring people downtown to help growth, economic growth here. And we've had some experience in doing that with a couple of projects in different communities that we care about. And we've followed a similar model as we came to this project. We've been very consistent from our initial discussions. Once we put a plan together, had an idea where we wanted to go with this development, of the things that were important to us and that we needed to make sure this project would work. And those are based on our history and our other projects. We've gotten a group of people, 15 people, who've committed the capital to be the equity for this new office building. We will pay for the $12 million office building. I want to make that very clear, because that seems to be sometimes when it's written up in the paper, that becomes unclear. We're not looking for anyone to help us pay the $12 million to build this office building. What we are asking for and have, we have another arrangements with municipalities we've been involved in. And is very common, is we're asking for site assembly assistance. That's the item you were talking about before. And that is common in urban projects, where you've got additional costs and expense to acquire the land and put it together and take care of an existing condition. They did it with the PAC in Appleton. They've done it, most urban, urban meaning downtown development projects have that as a component. So that was one item. The second item that was critically important is that we were gonna build a building and bring a significant number of people downtown, and they needed a place to park to come and work. So we asked for parking. And what we've suggested and worked through in our plan is a parking structure. And the way that our plan works to pay for that structure is through the real estate taxes on the $12 million building. So we'll build a $12 million building. Those are our funds. We're asking the city to take the real estate taxes that we will pay on that building and direct them into this TIF, which will pay for the parking structure. We're not looking to have additional funds from some other source to pay for that. We think that's fair. We think that's a fair request of the city. And we wouldn't ask it if we didn't. We're here for a positive project for downtown Manassia. So as a starting point, that's where we started. And like a lot of projects, in very general principles. And where it gets difficult is when you take it into specifics, and saying, how does this work long-term? Who would own the parking structure and for what period of time? Who will maintain it? And as we've talked through those details, we've had a lot of discussions. We put a development agreement draft together. We redrafted it. We've replied to the input that this body and the administrative committee have had. And I believe that we have moved. We've attempted to move to try to come to compromise positions that'll make this work. We've agreed we'll maintain the structure, the parking structure during the time of our use. We had some additional requests on the guarantee. That's, I know, been a significant question for everyone. And the guarantee that we offered in the last development agreement was longer than what we had started with the prospect of doing. So Director Kyle has, has given you additional details of what we've talked about since you last met and gave us some certain things to, to think about. I can tell you that the, the whole design of this program is to build a building that's a quality building that we're all proud of in downtown. It can be a showplace for downtown. But to try to do it in as economical fashion as possible. So that we can charge a rent that is attractive to a company like Faith to locate here, as opposed to going out on the highway. I think we've all read about the Towne and Grant Shoot has worked with Warner Electric. They gave them land, they gave them, not just TIF financing, but other tax abatement. Those, those opportunities are out there for companies like Faith. And we spent a significant amount of time talking to their management, their leadership, to ask them to be part of this, to invest in downtown Manassia. And we would do our part to prepare a building they would be very proud of. They could have a campus that they could work in. But we have to keep the rents at an economical level. And that's why when we say put some more money, why don't, why don't the people put some more money in the deal or find a way to charge more for rent? It just isn't there. This runs at a, at a cash flow model on, on purpose. So that we can keep things low, attract people here. And the entire, the objective is in the future, if this was 15 years from now and someone was here, it was me or someone else, to build a building, that wouldn't be the case. There'd be people wanting to locate downtown and they could charge the rents and maybe wouldn't need the same assistance to get going. So just a little bit of that, I wanted to put in perspective, just from our perspective, so you could understand where we are coming from. And I'm certainly willing to talk about any term generally. I'm willing to, to meet with the group in closed session if that's appropriate. But I would just finish with one comment on timing. And timing is critical in this, in this project. And we set in a very aggressive timeline to start with. Everyone's worked very hard to get there, including this body. But this deal will not last forever. And if we cannot get in the ground and get started on this project, we run a very good chance of losing it. So I, we'll do everything we can to, to meet an aggressive timing schedule. We have the bidding that's been done, mostly done, so they're ready to go to build once we get a go-ahead. And I want to certainly have a development agreement that be very open and transparent with everyone here and the public. That is fair to, to everyone.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Thank you for coming and clarifying some of this. One of the major concerns was the guarantee on the value on the building for the life of the parking ramp or your parking permit to use that building. What is for the public, what is the, if you don't want to answer that at this point, you're going to closed session, let us know.
We had proposed 15 years. We proposed less than that to start with. We, and then we had agreed to 15 years. It seemed like a long time to us and the people involved, and we thought that was a fair request. We've been in agreements like this where there's very little guarantee or a short period guarantee, but that was what we thought was fair.
Did you agree to any fees on using the parking ramp after the 15 years?
Our agreements with Faith are, would, if they use all the extensions, go for 25 years. And I don't see a, there would be no way for us as the owner, developer, investor to go back to them and change the lease and charge for it. So that would have to be additional money put into the deal. And I guess conceptually, I just don't understand how that helps if we, if the TIF will pay off the ramp, what the necessity of that money would be for. If we've got, we've got our tenant who will make the commitment, say this is gonna be their campus, be here long-term, why we would start charging them for parking some, at some point in the middle of their lease.
I don't know of how many communities are, are out there that are giving out free parking for anybody. That was one of the concerns, that these parking ramps are very expensive and for 15 years, that's almost half the useful life of this ramp. In another 15 years, we'd have to look at replacing and rebuilding it. And that's a very big expense. It's $4 million now, or $4.8 million. They could be $10 million in 30 years.
Yep, and I do think there are communities that give parking. And the Towne and Grant Shoot's an example, and I think this community has. And you're dealing with that, with some, an item on this agenda today for parking that you gave to someone for a lot, much longer period than we're talking about. And as I thought about this over the weekend, I guess I, I want to find a solution. And I want to find a solution and that we can implement in a short term, that you all believe is fair, that we believe is fair. And if we can't, in a relatively short period, we're just not gonna have a deal to talk about. So I'm trying hard to think of alternatives for us to consider. And I, and I came up with one that I would present to you today, and certainly will need to be detailed. But we would consider not selling the ramp back to the city, not requiring the sell back to the city. And, and simply have the ramp be paid over the course of the TIF. What that would do would be to put all the risk of the TIF not working on us as a developer. We'd have both the risk of the building and the TIF. It's a significant risk on our part. But I thought about this a lot over the weekend, trying to find a solution. The complexity of us building it, selling it to you for seven years later, us continuing to use it, is creating a lot of challenges. And I, I understand where you're coming from, saying, we need to inspect it at that time, we need to do this and that. But it's, it's creating a lot of uncertainty for both you and for the, this development. And as I thought about it, that is something that we would consider, if that helps clarify things and makes, gives us an ability to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Back to the building of value, you said you can guarantee the $12 million value for 15 years?
What I just said is we would pretty much guarantee it for the whole thing, because we're gonna be, if it doesn't work.
The whole thing is 28 years for the life of the TIF. And that's, the way we're scraping up money to make this thing work, we're gonna need the whole 28-year guarantee on a $12 million building. Or if the assessed value goes down, you have to pay us something in lieu of taxes to keep this going.
And that's what I'm suggesting, is that the TIF goes to pay for the parking garage. We won't require the city to buy that back. But we'll take, we'll take the TIF proceeds to pay for that. If the TIF proceeds don't pay for that, that's our risk, not the city's.
Yes, I would have to hear from, excuse me, from our head accountant how this works, if this changes any numbers and...
I'm just trying to find a solution. I'm not trying to further complicate it. I'm trying to offer something to try to help.
I'm not either. I hope we get a building at the end of this and going forward, but I'd like to hear from Peggy, if this changes any numbers for us.
The short answer is I don't know. I just heard about the proposal as well, so I think there's some things we need to think about as far as the way the interest is structured and the payments would be structured and all of that, that I don't have those answers to at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. Under the scenario you just discussed, maintenance of the parking structure would be on you then?
Yes.
The, our public would still have off-work hour use of it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Do the developers know how TIF work, how TIFs work?
I believe so.
For sure? Okay. What are the benefits to the taxpayers on this project?
Which taxpayers?
City, people that are gonna be funding this. What are the benefits to them?
Well, I think the people, the site assembly, the development incentive, the public is funding. The ramp, as proposed, would be funded by real estate taxes paid by the building owner, the majority of the, and so for that taxpayer, I know sees a benefit to the city of bringing a lot of jobs downtown, helping to revitalize downtown Manassia.
Okay. What are the immediate benefits to the taxpayers? Any?
Be the same.
The same? Okay.
Director Kyle, did you want to add anything to? I'm sure Hogarty said something?
Well, it's...
The short version, please.
Okay, I...
Not quite that short.
I have a short answer. It's a, it's, it's, I mean, Alderman Langdon asks a legitimate question. And again, I think, you know, if we look at the project expansively, you know, we, we've asked the regional partnership to give us some numbers of, you know, what kind of impact 300 professional, technically trained people have on, you know, what kind of income that generates, what kind of spin-off benefits can be expected in the community. And if you think about it, okay, these guys put this building there, well, what does that do for the attractiveness of the real estate on the north side of Main Street? We have the Manassia Grill that's, that's vacant. We have 212 Main Street that's vacant. We have 120, 223, I guess it is, vacant. We have some buildings that are underutilized. We have some uses that could quite possibly transition with the influx of more disposable income. And, and so I think there will be an, a fairly rapid impact, positive impact on the values of those buildings in proximity to this site. The employment opportunities, you know, Faith Technologies, the credit union. I don't know so much about the, you know, business office of the, of the dental facility. But certainly those employment opportunities will be made available to Manassia residents as, as well as others. It's, is it unreasonable to expect that some of those employees will be purchasing homes or renting apartments here in Manassia? And, and will the downtown become a more attractive place, or the near downtown, for residents to move into? We, we have a couple of very positive things occurring here with the grocery store. That's helping our overall offering of amenities and services. I think this, you know, is, is really gonna place us for a, a new round of growth and development here. And, and the tax benefits will be accruing over time.
Okay. Has the, I'm gonna guess no, but, or think, no, I'm not gonna guess. Has this been presented in an open and honest manner to the taxpayers of Manassia, this project? Do they know?
Isn't that what we're doing now?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, we've had, we've had...
I mean, we're going into closed session. I don't believe in that.
We, we've had, we've had discussion of this project several times before the Landmarks Commission. We've had discussion of this project several times before the Plan Commission. We've had it at the common council. We've had it at the administration committee. We've had it at special meetings.
In the papers and on the airs and...
Well, whatever the media coverage has been.
Okay.
But we are in the process of, and we've, as soon as we've had some basic terms of the development agreement, those were presented to the public. We, as of today, have yet to have the final documents, but I think we've been as open as possible in presenting this to the community. And not every dollar has been buttoned up yet as far as how this is going to work. We're still in the formative stages of putting this together.
Okay. Was Faith, when you bought the buildings, when the developers bought the buildings, was Faith Technology already moving in at that point?
No.
So, so when you bought the buildings, demolished them, you had no idea, you knew you're putting up a building, but you didn't know at that point, well, who was going in? So now we're at a crunch time where Faith says we have to have that done by next year May. But when you bought them, you didn't... in May, but when you bought them, you didn't, had no idea. Correct?
When we bought the buildings, and they came at different points in time, the purchasers did, the hotel was probably six, five, six months before the other buildings. And throughout that time, we worked very hard to secure, it was the first thing we did, said, we're gonna, we want to bring people to downtown Manasha, we want to bring jobs to downtown Manasha, let's go start having conversations about who might be that person. We certainly had talks with Faith at that time, we certainly, they were a logical choice to be that person. Had they committed at that time? No. But we certainly, they were, and we were talking to lots of different folks.
Out of the 12, all right, I, I'm going to go, the one point Alderman Zlinski mentioned, I'm still having a hard time with the 1.75 million. I won't go into everything Alderman Zlinski said, but I have this Internal Revenue Service from the state of Wisconsin, Peggy, and, and I'm going to read it. These are about TIFs, and if you want a copy, we can actually photocopy so everybody can have them. But number five says, can expenses incurred before the TIF, can, can, can expenses incurred before the tax incremental district is created be recovered? Only, the answer is only to the extent that the expense was for planning the district. Did we do that? Were we planning for that district at that time? And then, the cost of brick and motors cannot be incurred until after the project plan has been approved by the local governing body. Now, we're going to be paying them before we even, we don't even have a TIF there yet. So according to this, what we're doing is illegal, correct?
No.
Really? Okay.
No.
So it's on record, then you're saying that's not...
So there's a couple, there's a couple of things that have to be clarified. You just said that expenditures cannot be paid for work that's done before the TIF has been created. That's not being suggested. What's being suggested is a development incentive.
But we're paying them.
No, no.
No.
Not one dollar would be paid until a developer agreement would be signed and a TIF would be created. Those things, and the project plan amendments would have to be done, and all of those things would have to be in place. No money moves before any of that happens, or you would be correct.
Okay.
But we would never do something like that. The second part is, is it's a development assistance grant, it's not, we're not paying for any past costs. I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand what the concerns are, but what I'm telling you is, is that's not what we're paying for. That may be the basis, or why they're asking for the incentive, but the incentive is being asked for as such, an incentive. And that's completely legal.
Okay, good. It's what you say, yeah. So even if the, this structure, this project fails, developers still get their money? Correct?
Well, as Mr. Hogarty just explained, the money that they would be receiving would be strictly related to the TIF increment being generated by the office project.
Correct.
So if it fails, they won't earn the TIF increment, or as much TIF increment to pay their costs.
Okay. And then, one last thing, I was just wondering, and I do know for a fact, a lot of places, like, you're asking us to pay you back for the buildings that you bought, that's in there, correct? Where most places, developers ask, and I know for the Nina Towers, Nina took the towers down and cleared the site for development, that's what they paid for, correct? Not the buildings that were taken down, developers paid for that. Correct or wrong?
I'm not sure what the question is, the, the...
Well, we're paying...
The Nina Towers...
You want, you want reimbursement for buying the property, correct? You want, you bought the bank and hotel, you want to be reimbursed for that.
Site assembly is a, is a common term used in these projects.
Okay.
And it's to help the project make financial sense when you get going. It's very similar to what we did in Nina, or in Appleton for the PAC.
Well, what did you do in Nina? Nina, you just, they just cleared the site and demolished, and demolished the buildings for you, correct?
I don't believe so. Nina was done in three pieces, three towers, three pieces. My recollection, as I get older, I don't remember all the way, every one of them, but the last one, it seems to me with the, the movie theater was we, was done just the way this one is being done, that the developer did the demolition.
Okay. One last thing, on the, on the, on the parking ramp, are there going to be property taxes paid on that land? On that public piece of property?
I believe so. I believe it's on the tax...
Yes or no? Go ahead.
Yes, there, I believe that would be, if it's leased to them, it would be, I think it would be a personal property tax charge that they would be paying.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, I'd like to say, I said last week in the Administration Committee portion of the meeting was, this is a signature building in our downtown. This is something that is going to stand, hopefully for the next 100 years. If I may bring some new life in this century to the downtown, something we haven't had, the size of the building is really going to set our community, set the bar at a higher point for us. And I think Director Kyle is correct. I think this will bring more development in our downtown, and certainly, a building of this size will have a real positive impact on the community. With a bumping point, I think, was, was the parking ramp. I don't know all the answers to your, with Director Kyle and our Director, CNO, what that impact will have yet, okay, on the community with your changes. But I will say that TIF districts are to help a community clean up distressed buildings, neighborhoods. And I don't know by, with you taking over this, built the parking garage, if that will give us more leeway in this district, in this TIF district, right? To allow us to go, I haven't seen the boundaries yet of the district, and certainly, it's in the district that I represent. And there is an opportunity here, and we have some solutions, and that's what this is all about, to negotiate solutions to help get this project going. On Main Street, we all believe in this project. I don't think there's anybody up here that would say, we don't want this project, okay? It's when it comes to kind of bumping us up against our financial responsibilities and kind of putting us in a position that there's not a lot of room to, to do something else with the TIF district too. I think there's a building that's on the major corridor to, to the parking ramp that has some issues to it, that could be removed, and to make this even a, to help benefit other businesses, and also to make the area that people are traversing to the parking area, much more feeling of, much more comfort, safety, lighting. I think we have that opportunity to do that. I think we have an opportunity to go into the neighborhood that is distressed across the street. We have a federal grant that's going to help us reconstruct Broad Street, and I think with all that, the creativity can be beyond what we would even expect. If you go out to Myron Construction and look at their parking lot today, it's just incredible on how new parking lots and the designs of them, how it can look, and how it can benefit the community. Manasha has 990 stalls downtown. A lot of those stalls are underutilized, but with this development, it kind of pushes us to the point where we don't have all those stalls to work with. And if Faith Technology would go to a green site, they would have to build a parking lot. And I feel that if we pick up this distressed housing businesses, we could accommodate that and with this TIF, and clear out a site for, for Faith Technology, and say, here's a greenfield site for you, and let's build, and you can build your parking lot, which they would have to do anyways. The part, the problem I have with the parking garage is this, a negative effect on the north side and the south side. The south side, I think it's going to affect the businesses. And we have some, you know, very successful businesses in that area. You know, we have the Nemetschek Office Building, we have the Wethervein Restaurant, Lemon Lumps Line just had a wonderful, successful grand opening on Saturday. We have the Yoga Studio that's doing very well. We have the Blind Pig and the Wild Apple. And I think the ramp is going to be an obstacle to them and, and eliminate some of their And then, we're also talking about expanding the parking ramp, it's been brought up in some conversations. Now, I'm really uncomfortable with that, because if we have to expand the parking ramp, now we're going to take the other flat stalls in that area of these businesses I just mentioned, and we're going to put them in a, in a situation that's not going to be good. I know the developers wouldn't want somebody else's parking to affect their parking, and I think that goes both across as businessmen to businessmen. The other impact on the north side, we all, we already have a distressed neighborhood, and I have a, a video here of all the properties, and we can show this at some time, and these properties, right now, are in a distressed state. All the properties facing Broad Street have parking lots in their backyard. So who would want to really come to, and live in these rental units or housing units with a parking lot in their backyard? They all have it, some of the properties on First Street have parking lots, most of them are gravel. It's substandard housing. And by building a parking ramp, which is bigger than the area that we really have, we have to violate some of our zoning laws to get that parking ramp out, almost into Broad Street. Now, the housing there can only go down. So we have to look at the big picture here. We have a beautiful office building, we have a, a parking ramp, and then we have housing that's only going to deteriorate even more, that's already distressed. I don't think Faith Technology wants that across the street from their parking structure. If we open this up to a flat surface parking, when you walk through the corridor between the Wild Apple and what, what they're proposing to be their main entrance to the parking lot, if that's open, you're looking right at the Public Safety Building, the Police Station and Fire Station Building, it's completely lined up with that corridor. How safe would people feel without the proper landscaping, a green field, a flat parking lot, the Public Safety Building, the Police Station right there? The library needs extra parking, the, the library would benefit from that, the post office at times needs extra parking. And we've already cleaned a, two gas stations that were across the street from the post office. And hopefully this will, and I've had a developer tell me that, don't go selling that property just for a parking lot to other businesses, there, something will happen there. So I'm confident that we can get a beautiful parking, or beautiful building there too, but they're going to need parking. And this would also help them with that parking. Look back 20 years ago, the Broad Street parking lot was a lot of residential homes. We cleared those homes off the Broad Street parking lot to make it is, to make it what it is today. Randall's Auto House was in this Broad Street parking lot. We relocated them across the street. I think Randall's Auto House would be a fine addition to stay, that we work around Randall's Auto House, because if you're bringing 325 more people downtown, a full-service automotive repair is something I think, is something we would want to keep in the downtown, especially for 300 more people. So the, the 400 block of First Street and the 400 block of Broad Street, I think should be incorporated in this project. And then we're doing what TIF districts allow us to do, take care of blight, take care of distressed neighborhoods. And there's a couple other buildings that we need to address, and I won't disclose what I think those are at this time, but we have other public buildings, or that, other buildings that we need to address. We have other housing in the, in the near vicinity of, of this area too, that we need to address with, with the TIF district. And that's, that's what it's all about. When we create a TIF like this, the TIF has to go above and beyond just the, the parking ramp in the building, which we're kind of stuck at at this point. Just checking my notes here. We have some other issues that haven't been identified yet. With the parking ramp, we would have to relocate our dumpster, our city refuge and recycling center down there, which came to a cost as a taxpayers at $37,000. And we still haven't identified where that's going to go, and those related costs, $40,000 is a lot of money. Also, we're talking about the agreement that we have with the McClone people for 120 stalls, and we need to figure out where we're going to put those stalls. Now, if we have home in the TIF, we might be negotiate with other businesses, maybe to buy these businesses, to relocate these stalls. There, there's a wonderful opportunity too for us to, to keep that contract going and to relocate them for, for their 120 parking stalls too, without expanding the parking ramp at some time. I really, I, I hope that's not even being considered, but I've heard it twice now. And expanding the parking lot would not be good for the existing businesses that we I would like to see the TIF boundaries before we act on anything, and, just checking to make sure I got everything. And I would like to share this with the council at some point, the, what these properties look like and what we're dealing with out there. So it's important that, I know, both directors will get back to us on the financing, if we have some movement here, and Director Kyle on how the TIF may be set up. And I appreciate the developer coming forward with a, a solution, and I know together we can make this all happen. And I know we're in a time crunch here, but that's what it's all about, is to, to help this beautiful building development happen in our downtown. Thank you.
Alderman, a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hogarty, for being here this evening. I think, from what we've heard here this evening, that most of us agree on the potential positive impact this development could have on our downtown and the rest of the city, for that matter. I also firmly believe that the public deserves to see a potential agreement before the spotty votes on it. And I also feel that we've made some progress this evening, that we continue to make progress, and I think that tonight's provided a great opportunity for us to digest some of the information that you... that you've provided and the things that you've put on the table this evening. Director Kyle, I believe at the onset of this discussion, you were looking for a motion to, for staff to continue their efforts?
Well, a motion is needed if there's consensus that you can't hear your words.
Sorry. I'm not sure whether a motion is needed or whether we can just operate on consensus that staff should continue working with the developer to put this in, this development agreement into a formal document and bring that back as quickly as possible. And then, more or less, operating in the same timeframe, we'd be trying to pull together a more conceptual sort of understanding of how we would deal with the McClone parking commitment that we have. Is, we can't commit the same piece of ground to two different entities. So that would need to be addressed at some level prior to us proceeding into a development agreement. Again, I know we've been beating this drum of, we've got to, you know, try to keep this timetable on track. We've now slipped a week. And I think we, if we're to try to keep this thing, this timeline in some semblance of order, we should possibly be considering another special council meeting prior to our regularly scheduled one. The timing of that would be kind of dependent on when we can get our business taken care of as far as reaching consensus or near consensus on the development agreement. I think, you know, we have the same objectives in mind. We're trying to get a response on, we've made a number of inquiries with WEDC with regard to how do we proceed with the CDI grant. It's an unknown at this point in time. We've asked for some specific guidance that would help us understand how to move forward with that, and we'd be hoping to do so. The other thing that's at play in addition to sort of the, you know, the pressure the developer is under to have a project agreed upon so they can formalize their lease agreements is, you know, just the process for creating a TIF. It's, generally speaking, 60 days. You can maybe squeeze a week or two out of that, but, you know, this is all kind of bundled together. And, you know, I know we're imposing on the council by asking them to have these, unfortunately, frequent special meetings, but, you know, I don't know how else to keep this moving forward on a, you know, reasonable timetable.
Attorney Captain, would a motion be appropriate at this time? Or just to, my motion would be to allow staff to continue their efforts along that line? Or do you want me to read the full motion first?
You can read the full motion first.
Okay.
That would be great.
All right. I move that we advise staff to continue their efforts on negotiating an agreement and bring it back, along with its associated parts and documents, to the common council for further review.
That would be appropriate.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there discussion on the motion at this time? Alderman Zalinski?
Oh, can I go back to one of the development incentive? Sure?
Sure.
Okay. There was a presented proposal to reduce the development incentive of just over, a little over $650,000. The developer does not accept. Was it too low, or what would you accept?
I was curious where that number came from.
Actually, $650,250.59.
Yeah.
It was to get your attention. I was expecting a phone call at that point, and then I would have gone over the math with you, but the calculator fell apart. I just want to know if that was too low or if there is a number to negotiate on that.
What I've tried to do tonight is take a lot of risk from the city and put it on our developer group. And I think that's a significant offer on our part, and I think what we're offering is very fair.
With the ramp. I appreciate that part. I have a hard time selling it to my constituents, this incentive. That's a tough sell. They know what it is. It's not an incentive to entice you to move from one city to another. That's what you're calling it, but the incentive was to purchase a building and tear it down. And I'm having a hard time. I'm getting calls from other people that build houses and stuff. They go, "Can I move to the city of Manasha and get that same deal that you put up a $10 million building and you get $5 million back?" This city would be booming, and it's not your fault. That's between us right here.
Sure. I just, I can only say from experience, site assembly is a very common request, particularly in, in an area of a downtown where you have to deal with what's there as opposed to Greenfield. And so we believe it's a very fair request. I wouldn't be asking it if I didn't think it was fair.
There's no wiggle room on the incentive because this is so close, this TIF. I don't know how, changing of this parking ramp, and this question might be for Peggy, us repurchasing this parking ramp from them in seven to 15 years, that changed the cost of this TIF?
By us not doing that?
Yes.
It definitely would change the dynamics of the TIF.
Okay. And I had one other question. This is a 28-year TIF. Chances are this building's going to be resold. Usually that's what happens with investment properties. I talked to a lot of people. A lot of properties are resold. And this question would be for Pam, then. If this building is resold, how do we guarantee that they're going to be paying the same amount again? And can we hold them responsible for that? The new purchaser, because 28 years from now, I'm not really going to care. Maybe 25.
The way that we're looking, the way that we're looking at the development incentives would be they'd be paid out up to a maximum of what the increment for that year was, if I understand it correctly. That's the way I'm looking at it. So if the value of that building dropped significantly, their incentive for the parking would drop significantly as well. So we would not have to pay out more than their tax increment that was coming in.
Them keeping ownership of a parking building changes the whole.
It does. It places much more risk on the developers and much less on us, is what it's doing.
We're just basically agreeing for them to keep negotiations and we're probably going to be notified to come back here in a few days to.
Probably early next week to take a look at the next draft.
Okay. Well, willing to wait for that. Maybe they'll find some leeway in that incentive. Thank you.
Will you use your green light if they find something? Those green lights are expensive. Alderman, better.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, for our attorney, is this motion necessary? Because we already gave them a motion. We already approved for them to negotiate this, and do we need to do it over again?
It came out of administration.
The Administration Committee, but we still, as a council, I mean, there's nothing here for us to approve. There's really no action for us to take at the council level.
That's correct. It's, I guess, a measure of good faith to continue negotiating because if there was no interest in continuing, then we would be done.
Okay, that's fair enough. As long as I finally got my light to come on, I guess I'd like to ask a question or two yet, if that's okay. Mr. Hogarty, I really, to me, you, your investors accepting the parking ramp deal, to me, was really, really big as far as what this does to this agreement. Another concern that I had with the parking structure was from a security perspective and from a police enforcement or patrolling perspective. Was there any consideration given to security cameras being installed in here that the police department could monitor so that we didn't have to send patrols there on a consistent basis, unless the chief really wants to do that?
I defer to the chief on that, but certainly we could consider that, yeah. It is, security of those people parking there is maybe, if there are three things very important to Faith, that is, if that's not one, that's close behind it. And in all, they've talked to us at length about lighting, about the passageway between the buildings to cross the street, and every discussion is about safety of their people. So we certainly want it to be as safe as possible, and we'd work with the law enforcement to design what's the best way to do that.
I'd really like to see that happen and at least open up some dialogue with.
Sure.
Officers Emlock or Police Chief, however, whatever direction the Police Chief would like to get on that. But I think that's really important for a lot of reasons, and if we could facilitate that, I think that'd be a good thing.
We agree.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
So I will have the clerk call you, or you could tell, let the clerk know what your availability is for next week if you could do that for us so we can schedule. I would say early in the week, next week. Okay, just let the clerk know, and we'll try to work a day that everyone can be here. Item six is the redevelopment agreement between the city of Manasha and McClone Downtown Development from 1997. And I think we've kind of discussed this already. I don't know if we need any further discussion. Okay. So if not, item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak at this time, we would be interested in your comments as well. You sure can.
I'm Pat DuFren from the Weathervein Restaurant. And I just want to say that if, if this, this whole project moves forward, we're, we're going to make an investment with the city with, we're trying to close in our properties on, around June 30th. So we'd be buying the three buildings across the street. And the only reason that we want to do that is because of the investment made across the street, long-term. I don't even think I'd consider it if this proposal wasn't going to go through. So I guess what I'm asking for is I, is I hope you realize what this is going to do for the community and the taxpayers, getting these jobs and the, the whole downtown moving again. I think, I think we're all looking forward to revitalization of the entire town and, and just, just getting it moving forward. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. DuFren. Got a couple more people, either one.
I'm Joe Nemeczek. I'm the owner of the building at 180 Main Street, and I've owned this for about 18 years now. And of course, we've seen our tenants come and go over the years. And as you know, we put an awful lot of money into this building, and we're very proud of what we have there. And right now, we're in a very elite position because we have a corner building. Our tenants are in good shape. We just put two new tenants in the building, so our upstairs is full. We have one space downstairs, and we're holding that for a specific purpose that I won't announce tonight, but we've already turned down two tenants for that space. So we're really looking forward to this. And, you know, I've been here before. I'm a Town of Manasha or Fox Crossing resident, as we call it, and, but I do have a substantial investment in the city of Manasha. This is not my only property that I have, but it's my signature, you know, that I have down here. And we're looking forward to this progress. And the only issue that I'm really concerned about is parking. We have probably a need for about 25 stalls someplace that, you know, our people can park. We've worked on the street parking. I made a proposal a number of years ago. We enlarged the street parking a little bit more. But when I was down there again today, there's still two to three more stalls that we could create down there within those parameters. It's never been remarked, so there's a lot of wasted space down there, and we can go further out towards the curb, so it's another option. And I also talked about the area behind our, our building that I mentioned to Greg, that by going to a different type curb would allow us to park some vehicles or use it for unloading, which we can't do right now. We have to use the street to do that. So by making some of those changes, I think we'd like to go forward. I worked with the Burkestones before and in their group. I sold Harbor Place originally many, many years ago. I'm very familiar with the development agreement that was in there, the TIF. Also, the, the former Bada Building, which is Faith is in now, I worked on that as well. We had that sold, and then the, some of the people there decided they wanted to maintain ownership of it. So again, I'm familiar with what went into those buildings and those projects. We're on our way. We're moving forward. And I'm asking you, you know, please, I think they made a major concession tonight for this parking ramp. And I don't think you realize really how much that is. That's a huge difference. So with that in mind, let's get going, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bauer would like to speak as well still, or? No? Did you want to speak? You were trying to come up before, so I just wanted to make sure you got the opportunity.
I'm multitasking very well. My name is Kathy Bauer, and I live on Lincoln Street in Manasha. I was listening to Alderman Taylor, and I, I was, I'm a little bit concerned about scope creep. And I caution, I, if you, you know, and I understand talking, talking about blighted areas and things, but if there's housing there, there's probably eminent domain things that you would have to do. You would, who would be responsible for the cost of taking down the buildings? These are items that I do not believe belong to the current developer. And I believe that these are items that could be construed as scope creep. So I would just like to caution the council to stay within the scope and, you know, ha, you know, and haggle through decent parking for downtown Manasha. I know it is an issue, and I do believe that the investors are working very hard and making the concessions that we're looking for, and we need to work with them also. And I would just hope that we get to a point in Manasha where we actually have a parking problem because that's a signal to me that we're having a vibrant economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? If not, I don't think we need to go on to the closed session areas, so if someone, is there a second? All those in favor? Closest? We are adjourned. Thank you.